Okay, we're calling the Selectmen's meeting to order. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have a 7:15 appointment tonight with Lucy Ayers concerning the board of Selectmen's quarterly newsletter and then with Fran Gill on her one-day liquor license. That's a golden oldie. All right. We'll get started. I see no minute, meeting minutes, so, no, okay. No refunds, right? Okay. All right then, we have, we'll run, go right to appointments. We have an appointment of Beth Brewer to the Information Technology Committee. Take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any comments or questions?
Well, qualifications look great.
Yeah.
Gives us some more. I'm excited.
Excellent.
And we'll probably see if I can get them to arrange a meeting.
That would be good. Excellent. All right then, hearing no further comments or questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill's schedules, none, wow.
Well, what are they here for?
We're gonna have a hard time stretching this out to 7:15, you know?
I know. Well, actually, there's something you need at 15.
We have an 8:15 meeting.
Oh dear.
Yeah.
She asked for 8:15, Ashley Davies, so it's kind of late.
Okay. Maybe we'll try to figure out what she wanted. Do we already have materials, or?
Should be, I'm not sure if she gave that to us, actually. No.
So we gotta wait for her?
Look at that yellow folder.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Oh well.
Go home and come back.
Really? All right. Okay, updates, the town hall elevator project. I forwarded to people the stuff on the service.
Yes.
Yes. They, we don't have to start again.
Oh, good.
Yeah. He is, I expect to have the invoice, you know, in the next day or so, hopefully before even the Wednesday meeting, so. I believe you authorized me to sign those things and move them along, so as soon as we get it, I can do that. All right?
Good.
And I'm afraid I got sort of target fixation on that, thinking I could talk down the public utility on a price and just, you know, I wasted too much, I wasted too much time on that, but we, you know, we're still in line at the same.
We gotta do what we gotta do.
Yep. The meeting last Wednesday was canceled, so I'm not aware of any other developments.
Right. I hoped that you got the message.
I did get the message.
That's good.
So anyway, I don't, I'm not aware of anything else other than, other than that as far as.
Right.
I suspect at this time, by Wednesday, we ought to have a clearer crystal ball on when it will be open, you know, as a, you know, without the elevator operating pending the final installation of the service, so hopefully we'll, we'll have a date on that. Okay, the next is the December 11th special town meeting, unless we got something in the last hour or so from council. I don't think we did.
No, I'm just waiting for confirmation that council's got it.
Yeah.
And also that the planning board needs a little blurb about the moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
Tim wants to make sure that article is good for him to publish to have a public hearing on.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
That's about it.
And then scheduling a town council session on open meeting public records law. I think at this point, we're really probably into January, to be honest.
They gave a bunch of Thursday dates.
On Janu-, in January?
No, December, because you guys asked for November or December, and he gave a bunch of Thursday dates.
Okay.
But if you want, you can wait.
Well, I mean, I was thinking now that we had the special town meeting in December, but we, you know.
Budgets and all the rest of the.
It's not a big deal to me if you wanted to push it out to January.
How do people do? I mean, my feeling would be that we'd probably have a better turnout in January than we would in the week or two before Christmas.
Probably.
And I don't want to really schedule them in the same week that we have the special town meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So let's get some January dates and, not the first week either, but you know, the second week onward, see if we can do about that. Okay, the treasure collector merger discussion, I saw June's note. I, hang on, let's see the date here. So this is the 6th, right?
Yes.
Okay. I will be in London from Tuesday on next week, so that kind of shoots that. I don't know if they'd be willing to come in Friday and chat, have at least an initial chat about that when we're all in.
I actually can't.
You can't?
I have to leave early.
Oh, that's right, yes. Okay.
Which day is next?
Actually, we were gonna meet on Friday, and I needed to let you know that my thing is earlier than I thought it was meant to be.
Okay, so do we need to?
So I could do morning on Friday, but I would have to be gone by probably noon.
Oh, so you can't attend the afternoon session?
I can't, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And do you want to post in the afternoon session at that, this point then, or?
Like I said, I could come in in the morning, but I can't come in in the afternoon.
Okay.
I would have to be gone, like I said, by about noon.
Okay. Check here. I think I can do the morning.
What's Friday afternoon?
I have, Kristen got into the versatility thing. Oh, personnel.
Oh.
Personnel.
Yeah, the follow-up meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, so I can post it.
Yeah, so it's.
So you're not gonna do it now, not Friday?
Not at, not at 2:30 anyway.
Yeah, not 2:30, 'cause I have to be on the.
I mean, I could do it in the morning also.
I could, I could probably.
Is there time to post, though?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
I think I have an 8 o'clock call, but I could do 9:30, is that all right?
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah, 9:30 or 10:00 would be good.
10:00 is fine with me, too.
10:00 would be better.
10:00.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm hauling Addie Daly over to Essex.
Oh yeah, no, that's fine.
So I have to, I can be back by about 9:30, but it would be tight.
Essex.
Other than that, yeah.
In Essex, Mass?
In Bolton.
Oh, in Bo-, okay.
No.
You said Essex, I don't, holy she, what time do you get up if you go to Essex?
Just in Bolton.
Okay. No, that's 10:00, 10:00 is fine, 10:30 is fine with me, I just, I have an 8 o'clock call, and I was, I was just saying the earliest that I could do it.
All right. 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. And then you have to leave by?
Noon.
Noon.
And you're on vaca-, are you away for work, is this?
I'm away for work. Only that one, only, only the remainder of that week.
If it's.
But you'd be back Friday. Is it the following week?
No, no.
Say yeah.
We're talking about this Friday.
Yes.
And I'm here this Friday. I leave on.
It's the next Tuesday.
I leave a week from tomorrow.
All right.
And then I come back on Saturday, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a long trip, it's just, but it pretty much shoots the rest of the week after our Monday meeting.
I have to check and see if the county government will let me post on Friday, 'cause that's, I think that's a state holiday.
Is that the, is that?
Oh yeah.
Veterans Day?
Yeah, I have to just check.
But that's observed, though. Veterans Day is actually Saturday.
Yeah, but a lot of times the state is missing.
So it won't let it do Friday.
I'll see real quick if they'll let me. So it's 10?
10.
Okay.
I, I could also probably do Wednesday sometime, or.
Wednesday, we don't have the time to post.
That's right, we don't.
Unless you did it night.
No.
Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, I'm in Boston, so.
Okay, so we're Thursdays.
You know, there's always people around Thanksgiving weekend? You around Thanksgiving weekend?
Yeah.
I mean, why not the 17th? Oh, you're gone the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah.
Do people have any enthusiasm during Saturday of the Thanksgiving weekend, or?
Saturday might be okay. Friday, I don't know about.
That's fine.
Saturday morning?
Saturday morning.
Mine?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do Saturday morning.
This Saturday?
No, no. No, hang on, I was just gonna give you the date. Saturday morning, the 25th.
We're checking to see if it worked for Friday.
Yeah, unless Friday works.
Well, I'm trying to do Friday.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll do. But we, it's 7:15, so you can kind of look at that while we're talking about, come on down.
It is letting me post it.
Lucy?
Lucy.
Oh, no. Going for Friday.
I'm too tired.
I'm gonna put you on the hot seat.
Are you here for, do you, do you need something from us, sir?
I'm supposed to certify something.
She's not arising the 8:15 appointment that you told the doctor for.
Was for surgery, guess?
Bailing.
Oh, okay.
You could do now, you could do it to let her loose.
Oh, it is?
It's in there?
For her primary tomorrow.
Lucy, do you mind if we take just a couple minutes to sign this stuff? Okay. Okay, so that's this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the red areas, all the.
Yeah, let me just see what it is. I feel like we've signed this thing.
I've got it.
How many times? All right.
This one's new for me, so.
Okay. All right. So we've been selected by Commonwealth of Massachusetts, National Park Service, to receive up to $126,000 in federal land and water conservation fund grant assistance. Please note the project number. There'll be a mandatory grant management workshop on Thursday, November 16th. The directions are provided to us via mail. I will not be here that Thursday. The workshop should run about an hour, and critical information will be shared that enable participants to successfully complete their projects and receive full reimbursements. While Berlin's total grant is 126, I ask you break down your spending by fiscal year on page two of the contract enclosed. There may be some ability to move funding between the fiscal years. All right. First is a project agreement, and the Commonwealth agrees to transfer to the Town of Berlin the amount received from the National Park Service on account of said project, subject to the Commonwealth standard terms and conditions, just like a Commonwealth grant. We agree to execute the project described above in accordance with the terms and obligations contained in the, contained in the federal project agreement. Those are the two operatives. And we're just being asked to sign the Commonwealth agreement to this point, correct? And the standard part, okay?
I understand.
All right. And the terms as I've read about, I presume that the Conservation Commission have reviewed the terms.
They didn't communicate that.
Of the federal agreement, all right.
But they're working with Ashley on this.
Okay. All right then.
If you're still meeting in the next, you know, when she shows up at 8:15, it's vastly different.
Yeah, well, what we can do is.
Chase the signature on tomorrow.
No, 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 what we can sign it, do is sign it and withhold it in case, you know, something seems really wacky. How's that?
Well, she, I think she was hoping to take it tonight when she showed up.
I know that, I'm saying, we can sign it.
Oh yeah.
One of us can be here, I don't mind staying for it, just to see if there's anything, you know, that seems really crazy, and then I will withhold it if I need to.
Got it.
Okay? I don't think that's very likely, but.
No.
I also don't know what I'm signing, you know, which is typical stuff we get from them, so. Anyway, a motion to approve, this is really to the Commonwealth agreement to receive those funds. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, I'll accept that motion with the proviso that one of us will wait to chat with Ashley.
All right.
Understand that, okay? All right, any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Lucy, you wanna come down? We'll get a start on it.
Sure. So, I'm here about the, the town newsletter that I've been working with Lisa on, and I'd like to just, you know, be sure that we're all on board and that it looks and feels the way that you want it to. The next newsletter we're trying to get out is December 15th.
Okay.
Are we doing December 15th or January? Is it December or January?
September, October, November, December.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe it is January.
It's January.
Good, better.
It's January.
Much, much better.
It's much better than, like, Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Yeah, it is. So I just wanted to be sure that I, that, you know, that it's what you're looking for, you like the format, and, you know, the things that I wanted to do is to be sure to be able to get to all the town officials, so that I can email everyone, and I'm hoping that there's a distribution list that I can get a hold of.
Okay.
I may want to type the other time I have to check.
Excel Louise.
Thank you.
I know when work's coming.
Well.
All right, it's close.
It's close.
Yeah.
And they'll be training for that when it comes out?
Yes.
I'd like to get on that, too. So, excuse me, and the other thing that I wanted to know is there, how do, how do you expect to distribute this? Because I do have a lot of email addresses for people in town, most of the seniors I have, and I can, you know, send it to, you know, send it to everyone that I have, but how do you want to distribute this? What's the most efficient way to do this? Because there's a lot of people who don't have, you know, who don't have access to computers. You know, some of the seniors that I, you know, send the email to don't have access to the computers.
Well, I mean, if you're looking particularly at seniors, we could certainly put some hard copies in the library, we haven't already.
Yeah.
I did that last time.
They also meet for a luncheon, I believe it's the first Thursday.
First Thursday of the month.
Of the month.
Yeah.
And I could certainly, because I'm, I'm over at the church on Sundays, I could certainly leave a packet to be distributed on that Thursday or available for people on that Thursday, hard copy.
And it's not just, just seniors that I'm.
Oh, I understand, but you asked about seniors first, so I was responding to that.
So how many do you think, you know, like typically I'll take the Powderhouse News and I'll put 20 in, in the library and the general store and 19 Carter.
Mm-hmm.
So how many do you?
Do we know if folks took them last time, from the different places?
As far as I know, yeah.
Then we can check in.
All right. Then I'll, you know, do 20, 25 at each?
Yeah, why don't we start with that? And maybe if we, if you wouldn't mind, maybe checking in three or four or five days after you leave them and ask people to note sort of how quickly they went, and if, because, you know, I don't want to kill a whole bunch of trees, so let's start with, you know, 20 or 25. But then, you know, maybe if we, if, if you don't mind going back and checking and saying.
No, I don't mind.
How quickly did they go out? My feeling is if they all went out in the first 48 hours, maybe we could think about, you know, 30 or 40 the next time and see what happens with that.
And I will be contacting you all for articles that you might want to see in there.
Can we put, is it possible to put a link on our website to say if you'd like to sign up to get this by email?
I think it is. I don't know how quickly we can do that. I have talked to Garth about doing something like that, just in general, to collect an email address so that when we need to send stuff out, so it's on his list.
Right.
And he was hoping he'd have more time in November than he did in October.
And there are, I mean, there's a lot of different venues, I mean, parents, school parents.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm surprised at how many emails I have for people in town. But what I'd like to know, you know, is, do you want me to send it from my own email address, which is, you know, fairly quick for me to do, or do you have an email, a town email address?
We had talked about having Tom set one up, so that it would be like newsletter@townofberlin.com.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Okay. So you want me to talk to Chief Galvin?
Yep.
So I have to type all of these email addresses in? Oh my God.
Yeah, well, what about the Berlin neighbors network or something?
I put it out on Berlin neighbors connect.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll also put something in there that, you know, if anyone wants it emailed, you know, who picks up a hard copy, who wants it emailed, can also have it emailed.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Saving trees, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And the intention is as much email as much as we can.
And less footwork for you.
True.
And less expense in putting it out.
Mm-hmm. And could we post it right on the front page of the, of the website, so that everyone actually sees it? Because a lot of people missed it.
How about our Facebook page? Can we post it there?
Our Facebook page goes onto our homepage, but I don't have control over the Facebook, over the webpage, the webmaster does. He's traveling right now, but for the next edition, perhaps you could have a banner up there, like we did with Tennessee Gas, that lets people know, linking or something, that there's a new newsletter for people to check out.
Okay.
He has all different kinds of ideas at his disposal.
Okay.
Is that something that you want me to follow up on? Because I will.
You can.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you want a copy. Yeah, or copy, Lisa, Lisa's been working with the webmaster on that.
Okay, will do. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
January 15th, that's better.
Yeah.
Enjoy the holidays.
Thank you.
I have a fact, right? It's, yeah, January.
Yeah, it is, it's January 15th. I was going three months instead of four, but that's good. All right, that sounds great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lucy. And I'll send you the list of stuff that I have, because I have a couple people who have actually asked to maybe be in the newsletter.
Oh, great, great, sounds good.
Come on down.
I'm flying for a one-day pouring license for the wine tasting for the food pantry.
Mm-hmm. And Berlin Wine Cellar BJ's is donating the liquor, right?
Right.
Okay. And.
Those are all the wholesalers that they're using.
They say that they've used these wholesalers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right then. I think what we do is to say, instead of Berlin Wine Cellar, because we're not, we're not purchasing it, they're purchasing it and donating it, it's Berlin Wine Cellar is pouring it, correct?
Right.
Okay. So we'll cross this out, and we'll say C attachment, because that will give us the wholesalers.
Okay.
And then we'll put Berlin. At BJ's as the pourer. And it is a charitable wine pouring, yes. I'm sorry, it's one-day, all alcoholic is what we're gonna do here, I think, right?
It's wine and beer.
Yeah.
It's beer and wine, not alcoholic.
One-day beer and wine. Okay.
I didn't think BJ's was involved, though. That was just RWJ, the wine cellar, right?
That's their name, yes.
Yeah, BJ's is the landlord, but wine cellar's a separate entity.
Yeah, I've just put Berlin Wine Cellar as BJ's, I think that'll do it.
That's what they call themselves.
Okay. All right. And you're looking for a one-day beer and, okay. You have prepared for us a one-day all alcohol, and that's fine, because that covers wine and beer as well.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Maybe it's drunk with a hint of alcohol.
But that doesn't, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. So we'll put that there. I just want to be sure we got everything else. Okay, so this stuff here is all gone, because she's, she submitted a new application, okay?
Check, so the location needed to be changed to 19 Carter.
The location, but also this purchase and sale stuff needed to be changed. So we now have this from her.
I have an episode.
Yeah.
Do you want me to look at it or?
No, I don't want you to look at it, I just wanted you to know what, so we take this stuff out, because this.
Whatever you're looking at.
Okay. This piece here, okay, just so you, you see, okay, is going to be replaced by a new form that she's spelled out.
Arms-length transaction, right there.
Yeah, it is, okay.
That's as arms-length as it gets, Tom. Good for you.
Okay.
Looks good.
Yeah, that's what I want it to look like.
Yeah, it's good.
All right, so all I'm saying is, you had this in the file, but this is the old form.
Yes.
So we're just replacing this form, which just.
You want to text, sign it?
Get it way out of the way, so we don't.
Yep.
Mix it up. Okay. So what we have to do now is execute this form, and we'll put this in the file.
Yeah, that's just a form. The license itself is all you need to sign.
Why was that, did that have signatures for the changes, or?
Yeah, I mean, just when I log in and it's received from your office, whatever.
Okay.
It's kind of a formality, but.
Okay.
There's no clock ticking.
Okay. All right, so we'll put this together.
There is an actual clock ticking for other licenses.
Hmm?
You have to act, you have to act within a certain number of days of receipt.
Oh, we're gonna act tonight?
No, not this, but in, like, a regular type application.
Yeah. Okay. Just getting this all together. So as you, as we talked about before, we had gotten ourselves in a bit of a kerfuffle, because we were looking at this as being wine that was donated, and there was a requirement for this, that it'd be purchased from a wholesaler. But in fact, the proper characterization of this is that it is bought from one of these wholesalers, and BJ, the wine cellar is donating the cost of what they buy from the wholesaler. So that's why we are able to issue this license, and because we spent a huge amount of time on this, I'd, I'd ask, did we then promptly make a motion to approve this one-day all liquor license?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any other possible comments or questions on this? [laughing] All right, then.
Do I need a copy of that to hang up?
You're going to get that yellow?
Yeah, you're going to get the-
Signed copy, once they sign it.
Yep. This is a-
And you, you would post it?
Yep.
And today is?
The sixth.
The sixth.
I'll take a quick copy for you, and then I'll give you the original. I'm just going to take a copy and I'll give you the original.
A lot of paperwork.
There is.
Statement.
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, you just gotta, thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.
Hope you all have the time to come.
Yes, indeed. Thank you for your patience, Fran.
Yeah, thank you for your help.
Next year, as I said in my email today, we'll know exactly how to do it.
Right.
You know?
And they'll change it.
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Oh, please, no. All right.
Maybe we should note somewhere how this was done.
Well, the minutes should show it, but yes, you're right. We don't want to do this again. All right.
That was famous.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like, death is famous after long suffering. It was finally famous. Yep. All right then.
Did you set a date for the treasure collector merger discussion? You, you want to talk about dates?
We can, no, we, we had gotten, you know, past the time of the appointment. We were still talking about the, the personnel meeting. Okay. So, um, I could, um, I could meet Friday at the same time, but that's going to put it awfully close, I think, trying to put those two meetings together with you having to leave early.
Were you able to schedule?
Yes, you are ten o'clock on Friday for the personnel committee.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she said that, that was the last thing she said.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear her say that.
Yep.
Good.
So we can do that. I can, I could probably do Monday sometime, next week, but then I'm, I'm out of play until next week.
Right.
I can't do Monday.
Okay, that's fine. No, we, we'll get it.
She's got her well seat.
Hmm?
She's got her well seat in.
Oh, awesome. That then gets us to the twentieth, or twenty-first, that's the Monday or Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
This is for the treasures meeting?
Yes.
Well, what if we, what if we spoke with June and Dennis after our meeting and filled Lisa in? Would we be able to do that?
We could do that. We could at least have an initial discussion.
I'm just afraid that they'd like to do it sooner than later?
Yeah, I mean, this thing isn't going to be effective for months and months, so I mean, it's, I-
I think it's just talking about how the process is going to go, and you can absolutely-
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we can have an initial discussion, then we'll sort out something, because the next two weeks are tough, I'm out, and then, and then it's Thanksgiving week, which is a tough week, so, okay.
I would imagine we might have to have another meeting anyway.
I would suspect.
So is that just something you'd add to the agenda for that, that Friday? Just those two things?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you want to add it to this Friday?
Yeah.
And do you want me to invite the O's, the treasurer, the collector, and the-
Yes, we're, if we're meeting at ten, and you have to be out by when?
Probably noon.
Noon?
I won't know until Thursday.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to take two, I don't think we're going to be taking two hours on the other stuff, though.
Probably not.
Did we get guidance from people back on?
Only two departments have answered, and both of them are holding steady.
Holding steady what?
With what they requested.
Yeah, with what they requested, despite the fact that the quo.
Okay, so the, in other words, that the grade and step level that they requested are the grade and step level they want people to get?
Yes, and in both those instances, they're beyond one step, so like it's in play, do you know what I mean, like?
Okay. And that's even those, okay. Okay. Yeah, because what I really wanted to do is, everyone that they signed, I wanted them to say, does the dollar amount-
Yeah.
-control, or does the step raise control? And they've said the step raise should control. Is that right?
Both of them are sticking to dollar figures, that I understand, that they want the dollar increase that despite, the way it washes out in nineteen, they want the dollar figure to be what they had asked for, because they're going with comp studies.
So it was the dollar that was on the sheets? No.
I think there was both on some of them.
Yeah.
So it was from the old?
But the dollar was from the FY eighteen.
The issue that we have here is that we had a dollar amount on there, and we had a step raise, we had a, a grade and step level. Okay? The dollar amount-
I copied you all on that, that email that I sent to those department heads. Was that not clear, my email?
I think it was clear. I just don't know if they understood. I was clear to me, but-
So I'm asking, all I can do is communicate.
I mean, if you would go back to them again to say, we understand that what you want is the dollar amount that you gave, and we will make changes to the step and grade level to coordinate with that.
Or have them match up. If you're going to, if you want two steps, pick, you know, put the correct salary.
Well, we could ask them to redo the thing with the old, but then you'd be sending all that stuff back.
Right.
The two that answered are looking for more than one step, and they both are holding, their answer is that they want to hold with, with what they had submitted, despite the fact that the quo has now been set, and it might jog whatever grade and step they want. So even though it doesn't make sense, right, they wouldn't have known the exact dollar amount, they're still saying that they want to hold to the grade and step that they asked for.
Okay, so the grade and step is the what?
It's the grade and step that control, even though that would be a higher dollar amount.
All I can tell you is that they want to stick with exactly as they submitted the grade and step they wanted. If you want me to-
I think they want the grades.
Okay, yeah. All right.
Oh, hey, look at this.
Oh. Hey, I'm glad you stopped by, because we have an eight fifteen appointment, and we're almost out of business here, Tom, so.
Excellent. So are we, are we okay? We're clear?
I, I-
It's clear as mud.
I copied everybody on it, and, and also I don't-
No, that's fine. If you copied us on it, I'll go out with an email, too, to say.
I saw one, yeah, I saw one from Dennis.
Okay.
Yes, and then I got another one offline to confirm, and I said, please put it in writing, so I can just put it with the cloud.
Okay.
What's up? Hold it on?
No, I was going to talk to Tom at the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Stuff going on, so.
All right.
Just going to kind of hang out till then.
Okay, well, we, we should have a few minutes very shortly, or a couple minutes very shortly. All right. Okay, any selectmen's updates?
Uh, yeah.
So do you want, I'm sorry, so do you want me to ask them to come in at like eleven if you're starting at ten?
Oh.
What, ten, eleven-thirty?
Let's, let's say eleven-fifteen.
Eleven-thirty.
Because I think we'll be through in an hour at this.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're not, basically, we're just-
Probably just going through the employee spreadsheets or the employee reviews.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, I think an hour should be fine.
Okay. Do you want me to give my little update?
Yeah.
Because the highway employees did not ratify their contract, Keith has asked in their behalf to give the highway employees the quo increase for this year, retroactive. And so I wanted to pass that by you, too. It is budgeted for. I just wanted to make sure that Personnel was okay with that.
I am okay with that.
Okay. All right then.
Yeah.
And I think June will probably start the new rate next paycheck. Okay?
That's great.
And a retroactive lump payment next week, or?
I don't know how she does it.
Um, she and Keith can work that out.
Yeah. I think that was about all I had.
Okay.
I was going to ask you also, last Monday, Lynn was in here, and she was talking about, remember the license, the-
The gas station on Central Street.
The gas station next to her home.
One of the conditions of them being given their license to upgrade their underground fuel tanks was that they were going to line the border for property with Arborvitae, and it didn't happen.
Okay.
I didn't know if there was anything that we could do to help that to happen.
We could send them a letter reminding them of that.
I can drop one.
Yep.
All right.
I mean, it may be that they feel that it's appropriate to wait until spring to plant or whatever, but they can say that in their response, okay?
Okay. All right. That was it.
All right.
Had a slow week last week.
Oh, that's good. Excellent.
Good for you.
And I gave you my update about, you know, my-
Right.
Quixotic jousting, jousting with-
National Grid.
National Grid.
I did actually talk to Keith a little bit about the numbers we came up with, and